I call a 3:00 PM session of the October 28th, 2025, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in the meeting this evening as agenda item number 17. Again, welcome everyone. We have one item that we need to take care of prior to taking up any matters of business. Section 2.3A of the Henry County Board of Supervisors bylaws allows for a board member to participate in a meeting of the board through electronic communication subject to the limitations of the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3708.3. Supervisor Travis Pruitt of the Ridgeway District has requested to participate in today's meeting through electronic means. He's online now with us. Mr. Pruitt, for the record, will you please state your purpose for needing to participate by electronic means and state your current location, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm at a Southern Software Users Conference, which is my full-time employer, and I am in Morbid, South Carolina.
Right, thank you. I'll need a motion from a board member affirming that the audio and video that you've just heard is sufficient and acceptable for Mr. Pruitt to join us by that electronic means.
I'm making a motion that we allow Mr. Pruitt to participate by electronic means.
Second.
Okay, and just for clarification, everyone can see and hear. Okay, all right. All in favor? It's five, and with one joining via Zoom. Jennifer, okay. I was looking for you back there, and you're there. Okay, thank you. That will allow us to go ahead and continue and start with agenda items that we will consider for business. First agenda item is agenda item number five, the Items of Consent. What action would the board like to take in regard to approving the items of consent?
I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, or raise your hand, I guess. I wasn't sure which way Mr. Pruitt was going to do that, so I saw the raising of hand. That is recorded as six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number six, we'll have a report on the delinquent tax collection efforts from our county treasurer, Scott Grunstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Grunstaff. Personal property tax as of September 30th, 2025, we collected 924 personal property tax. During the month, we collected $50,109. Real estate collection as of September 30th, we collected 94.88% of 24 real estate taxes. During the month, we collected $68,069. Since January 1st, 2025, TACS collected $917,609, and our debt set off during the month of October, we collected $6,194 for the year. That total was $384,270, and so far in October, we collected 71 DMV stops. As most of you are aware, the 25 personal property bills went out this weekend, and we've been very busy collecting those already. There was a slight issue with pulling my printer. I just got phoned about 15 to 20% of the bills did not have the backing on, and it has all the information and also the return address. So we're working to see what we can fix on that, but if you hear any complaints, there were some bills that did not have the back, including Mr. Wagner and Mr. Jones. And they were the first ones pointed out to me.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Grunstaff at this time?
Have you received any feedback from the new dates? Yeah, any feedback from anybody? Okay.
No. The first thing we had, a lot of people weren't paying with their Christmas club, but they've all been paid out. Most of those get paid in October, so that's helped in real estate. And most of the mortgage companies, the people at escrow, we've got most of those in. In fact, we got probably one of the biggest ones in today, so we've plenty of time before October 31st, so running pretty smoothly, I think.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number seven, we're going to ask Melissa Chapman, interim director for Blue Ridge Regional Library, to come to the podium and basically give us a little background on herself and some things going on with the library system.
Thank you very much. Just real quickly, my name is Melissa Chapman. I'm the interim director of Blue Ridge Regional Library. The library board is currently undergoing a search for a new director. Rick Ward retired at the end of June, so I'm filling in, and I wanted to give you guys a brief overview of what we've been doing in Henry County. Branches, you have a handout, so you can follow along, or you can cruise at your leisure. Our mission is to provide free, friendly service and access to timely materials that educate, enrich, and entertain the entire community. Some of the ways we're doing this is providing a safe, welcoming space for the community to gather and work. We support learning for all of the members of the community, from the very young to the very old, with our resources and programming. And we offer programs and a wide variety of resources to entertain and enrich everyone's quality of life. First of all, the safe, welcoming space. We have chairs, we have warm, friendly staff, we have a meeting room that's available for public use, and our meeting room has been used by outside groups 117 times, and this is as of August 31st, so it's warm. And we have lots of space for people to work. We offer a lot of resources. We have the traditional ones that everyone knows at the library. We have books and newspapers and magazines, but we also have YMCA day passes, we have eBooks and e-audio books. We do have toys that people can come in and their children can play. We also offer puzzles that are available for checkout, and we can get a day pass for the Virginia Museum of Natural History as well. So we have a lot of stuff for everybody. And we have amazing programs. These are some of the programs for our kids. One of our biggest ones is Storytime, and these are some pictures from some of the Storytimes at the Henry County, Bassett, and Ridgeway branches. And all of the branches participated in summer reading. I do not have those numbers, but if you're interested, I can get you those numbers. But it was a very fun, very fun time. They did lots of great stuff, had a little petting zoo and everything. And each branch has its own kinds of children's programming. At Bassett, they have the homeschool STEM where the children meet and do lots of fun STEM activities. They have craft classes at Bassett. Collinsville has a Lego club that's very active. And Ridgeway had a Read the Shelter Pets, which was very well received, lots of cute pets and dogs, and a lot of children got to read to them. And we partnered with the SPCA on that one. And all of the branches offer craft classes. These are some of the ones that were offered by our system coordinator or our system program coordinator, Leandro Bradley, and he does amazing work, as you can tell, and everybody loves his classes. And some of the programs for adults at Bassett, we have our chair exercise classes, we also have craft classes, Book Bingo and their book club, Tea Talk. And Collinsville also has a lot to do. They have Book Bingo, they also offer Blind Date with a book. Some people found love, some didn't. Same in real life. We have a crochet group, and they started a spice club. And at Ridgeway, they also have a chair exercise class, and they also have crafts classes, and they also have a crafting group that, I think a crochet knitting group, that meets at Ridgeway called Tangle Threads. And these are all open to the public. And Bassett has programs for all ages. They have their Lego clubs. Parents have been joining in with their kids during Lego club. And they also have movies, family movies. Collinsville's been offering a Crafty Saturday that everybody seems to love, as you can tell by the young gentleman in the middle, and they've also been offering musical bingo. And Ridgeway also offers Blind Date with a book for all ages, and they also have all ages craft classes where parents can join in with their kids. And of course, we are still a traditional library. We do have reference. We have fax machines, copiers, computers where people can print things out. We also all answer a lot of reference questions. As of July 31st, we had 187 job-related questions, and we did have three people get a job through our help, so yay. We also have continuing education questions, and we had 94 of them answered. And of course, we fax documents for the community members that need documents processed. And these are just a few statistics, program number, circulation. I won't get into too much of this. You can check that out at any time if you'd like. And we do have a few extra things that we offer. Bassett offers literacy and developmental backpacks. They are really good, and they are very popular. They go from ages zero to about two years. Ridgeway has started offering cake cans that are available for checkout, and Collinsville has a sensory play area for kids who may be on the autistic spectrum. And of course, we wouldn't be able to do any of this without our staff. A big thanks to Kim, Karen, and Amy, the branch managers of Henry County, and their staff, Kelly, Esau, Haley, Libby, Regula, Donna, Vicki, Jennifer, Hilda, and Betty, for their hard work. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without them. And of course, the system staff, they put together, Leando puts together his great programs, and they provide the backup that allows the branch staff to do all of the amazing programming, support, and be able to answer questions. And thank you to our library boards, specifically to our Henry County board members, Monica, Christopher, Nada, Lori, Viola, Charisse. We appreciate their support. And I want to say thank you to Dale Lander for your support and for the board as well. We appreciate your support. As you've given over the years to the library, it does mean a lot to us. And I'd also like to say thank you for the citizens and residents of Henry County. We do what we do for them, and we try to do the best and offer the best resources that we can for them, and we're happy to serve. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Also, it noted that one of the board members, Mr. Gardner, is here with us. Welcome, Mr. Gardner. Thank you for being here. That takes us to financial matters under agenda item number eight, 8A, an additional appropriation referencing traffic enforcement grant for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $33,222 received from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for traffic enforcement. The grant is passed through, funding received from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for fiscal year 2026. The grant will be used to pay for overtime for deputies performing extra traffic enforcement, purchase a LiDAR unit for speed detection, and to pay for travel expenses related to grant administration and check. And Sheriff Davis is here, should you have any questions?
If the board has background material on this, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $33,222 from the Virginia DMV grant for traffic enforcement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's six-zero, Jennifer. Eight B, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing state asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is asking the board to approve an appropriation of $31,200 from state asset forfeiture funds to purchase Class A dress shirts as part of the department's transition to new uniforms. In addition, Sheriff Davis is asking the board to award a contract of $53,700 to Reed's uniforms for the purchase of the shirts. Funding will come from the appropriation as requested and $22,000 from the sheriff's existing budget, and pricing is based on a contract with the Virginia Sheriff's Association. And the sheriff is here, should you have any questions?
What action would the board like to take in regard to the awarding of contract in this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $31,200 from the state assets forfeiture fund and award a contract of $53,700 to Reed's Uniform as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight C, an award of contract referencing emergency vehicle equipment for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is asking the board to award a contract for $64,187 to East Coast Emergency Vehicles LLC to purchase emergency equipment for nine new police vehicles. The purchasing department has authorized East Coast as a sole source provider for this equipment, and funded it is included in the fiscal year 2026 budget for this purchase.
What motion would someone like to offer in awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract of $64,187 to East Coast Emergency Vehicles LLC to purchase emergency equipment for nine new police vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight D, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing Commonwealth Crossing Business Center for the Engineering and Mapping Department. Mr. Wagner.
Tim Pace, our director of engineering and mapping, is requesting the board to approve an additional appropriation of $750,000 received from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership through their Virginia Business Ready Site Program. The grant funds are designated for engineering related to the development of Lot 3 at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. In addition, we're asking the board to award a contract of $995,000 to Timmons Group for engineering design services for Lot 3 at CCBC. Following a request for proposals, Timmons Group was selected for the project, and funding is provided through the BEP grant and local funds, which were included in the fiscal year 2026, CCBC.
In regard to this additional appropriation and awarding of contract, what action would the board desire to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $750,000 from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership and award a contract of $995,000 to Timmons Group as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight E, an award of contract referencing ambulance re-chassis for the Public Safety Department. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Tim Duffer is asking the board to award a contract of an amount of $214,616 to Vests Sales and Services Incorporated for the re-chassis of an existing 2018 ambulance to a 2025 Ford four-wheel drive chassis. In addition, Mr. Duffer is asking the board to approve Vests Sales and Services as a sole source vendor for this work based on the existing lifetime warranty on the modular box. And there is additional information related to that in your packet. Funding for this item is included in the fiscal year 2026 budget, and Mr. Duffer is here, should you have any questions?
In regards to the awarding of this contract, what is the desired action the board would like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract of $214,616 with Vests Sales and Services Incorporated for an ambulance re-chassis as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight F, an additional appropriation referencing voter supply cabinets for the general registrar's office. Mr. Wagner.
Registrar Donald Stolzvahn is requesting an additional appropriation of $36,650 to purchase seven secure voting supply cabinets. As Stolzvahn noted, that these items were originally planned for a future capital request. However, an opportunity is now available to purchase them at approximately 70%, oh, excuse me, 40% below this price. No funds are currently budgeted for this purpose, and if the board concurs, staff recommends using the board's contingency fund to cover these costs. And Mrs. Stolzvahn is here, should you have any questions?
You do have paperwork in front of you so that you can quickly reference what the current board contingency fund is and the amount requested. With that, in regard to this and taking in consideration the background material that's been provided, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $36,500 from the board's contingency fund for the purchase of new, purchase of secured voting supply cabinets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item number nine, a consideration of a resolution in renaming a memorial bridge for the town of Ridgeway. Mr. Wagner.
This item is on the agenda at the request of Supervisor Pruitt, at the request of Mayor Craig O'Dea of the town of Ridgeway, is formally asking the board to support the town's request to the Commonwealth Transportation Board to name the bridge located on Main Street and Ridgeway as the Mayor Edward M. Page Senior Memorial Bridge. Earlier this month, the Ridgeway Town Council adopted a resolution on the matter and intends to forward it to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for their consideration.
It may be noted as part of your working papers in the resolution that all costs associated with this are not picked up by the county itself. It's picked up by the town of Ridgeway for cost and maintenance on this, and that's part of the resolution that you've had as part of your working papers. With that, in regard to approving the resolution, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution supporting a petition to the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish the Mayor Edward M. Page Senior Memorial Bridge.
We have a motion by Mr. Pruitt.
Second.
Second by Dr. Cobbler. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item number 10, informational items. Start by taking comments from the board, and I will start with Mr. Pruitt, since he's right there in front of me on Zoom, and then I'll work my way down the line. So do you have anything to offer as comments, Mr. Pruitt?
The only thing I have real quick is today's national first responder gag, just a thank you to the sheriff's office, fire rescue, public safety, our 911 dispatchers that keep all that going. Appreciate you.
And I think all of us concur with that, and it was a great notification via social media from the Henry County Sheriff's Office acknowledging this, and I think that goes a long way when we do acknowledge that publicly to let everyone involved know how valuable they are to our community. Dr. Cobbler, do you have any items?
I just want to also concur with that and thank the Sheriff's Department and EMS and all the folks for a great, safe race weekend, this weekend.
All right, great, thank you. No, sir. Ms. McCann.
I do. I want to mention, and I hope the media picks up, that there will be another Horse Pasture District Community Meeting coming up on Tuesday, November 18th, at the Horse Pasture Ruington Building. Again, our county administrator, Mr. Wagner, will be there, as well as Sheriff Davis and Lisa Hughes with VDOT. It starts at 6:00, usually ends around 7:30. Also, the 30th Annual Coat Drive for Kids is underway, partnering with Mr. Dillard here with the Henry County Schools. We provide, at this point, we've got brand-new coats going out to a lot of our children. We're collecting coats, but we're also taking good, used coats. One Hour Martinizing is very gracious to clean those coats for us, and we provide those if we can't use them for any reason. We certainly make them available to anyone that does need a coat. So if you can open your heart, open your wallet, open your closet, and if you can find any coats, let me know. I'm more than happy to pick them up. You can drop them off at Star News or at One Hour Martinizing, any of those locations, preferably 220 South, but any of those will take those coats.
Great, thank you. Ms. Bryant.
Other than just to say, you know, everybody knows November 4th is next Tuesday, voting in the United States here in Virginia. I would just ask that everybody would vote. You know, it's your patriotic duty as a citizen of the United States to get out and vote. You know, our ancestors fought and died for this and our rights to have the opportunity to get out and vote. So, you know, by all means, regardless who you vote for, get out and make your vote count.
Okay, I don't have anything, Mr. Wagner.
Just a couple reminders related to the upcoming Veterans Day holiday. On Saturday, November 8th at 9:00 AM, all vets, hopefully walking the park, at Jack Dalton Park. They will feature the Henry County Honor Trail. I think it'll be a nice treat to pay respect to our veterans in our community if you're able to attend that on Saturday, November 8th at 9:00 AM. And then on Veterans Day, November 11th, at 11:00 AM at the John D. Bassett Event Center, will be our formal community Veterans Day service. And as to time, we also recognize in the outstanding military veteran in our community as well. So hopefully you can attend those events.
All right. That takes us to agenda item number 11, if a board member will cite the reasons for going into closed meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed meeting under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Community Criminal Justice Board, the Patriot Center CCBC Advisory Board, and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission; 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters; 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition disposal of real estate; 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries; 2.23711A10 for discussion of awards and recognition; and 2.23711A1 for discussion of personnel matters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. I'll see board members upstairs. Mr. Pruitt will be joining us via Zoom upstairs as well. Meeting on a motion by Ms. McCann, second by Mr. Bryant. Mr. Powell, will you hold the board, please?
Yes, sir. Four members of best of your knowledge on their public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the section 203711, were heard, discussed, foreconsidered in closed meetings. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McCann?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Crowe?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Pruitt.
I'm not sure if Mr. Pruitt is actually, you have him?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a least consideration for the board.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I do. I move the board authorize the county administration to negotiate a lease between Meeks LLC and Henry County for real property located on Kaufman Drive in Collinsville. Henry County for real property located on Kaufman Drive in Collinsville.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five in the room, and I assume you're getting an affirmative on the member joining by electronic communication. Dr. Cobbler, in regard to the Community Criminal Justice Board, I believe that you have a name to mention for the board's consideration.
Yes, I make a motion to reappoint Deputy County Administrator J.R. Powell to the Community Criminal Justice Board for a two-year term.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five in the room and one electronic affirmative vote. That concludes the business from the afternoon session. We're going to take a brief recess that is at 5:47, and we will start the six o'clock meeting promptly in just a few minutes. I call this 6:00 p.m. session of the October 28, 2025 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order from our recess of just a few moments ago. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, Matters Presented by the Public, that will take up later in this meeting as agenda item number 17. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and being a part of your county government. To begin with tonight, we're going to ask a group to come forward, and we have two groups of scouts in attendance, the Boy Scouts Troop Number 166 and Cub Scouts Pack 166. Boy Scout members are Nathan Bell, who is a recent Eagle Scout, Benjamin A.G., Daniel Craven, Isaac Craven, Bryson Custon, Colton Custon, Jack Whitlow, Landon Corvail, Eli May, Luke Montley, Parker Penix, and Sean Simpson. Troop 166 Scout Master Scott Cobble. Assistant Scout Masters are Kevin Wampler, Doug Carter, Peyton Simpson, and Jim Franklin. Cub Scout Pack members are Luke Craven, Zach McPherson, Lucas Stone, Brandon Eames, Tessa Simpson, and Kate Simpson. Cub Scout leaders are Marcus Stone, Jeremy Craven, Daniel McPherson, Logan Eames, and Melissa Simpson. And this is the information provided to be prior to tonight's meeting, and if there are any corrections or additions to the names, I'm going to ask the Scout Masters to make those corrections. What we're going to do is ask scout members if you will come forward and circle around the podium, and even though we had it earlier today, would ask you all if you would lead the entire group here in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Scouts, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you all. Scout members, if you'll hold your place, and those that are prepared to offer comments, please do so at this time.
Thank you for allowing us to join you tonight. My name is Jim Franklin. I live in the Reed Creek District here in Collinsville, and we're here tonight supporting and representing local scouting in America, formerly the Boy Scouts of America Organization. As Mr. Adams said, tonight we have Boy Scout Troop 166, Cub Scout Pack 166 in attendance. We're both based out of here in Collinsville at the Stone Memorial Christian Church. We meet on Monday nights at 7:00 p.m. at the church, and would like to invite anyone interested in learning more about the scouts and opportunities provided for youth to join us for a meeting during one of those times. We'd be happy to have you there. As you know, scouting is the nation's foremost youth program of character development and values-based leadership training, and this helps the young people be prepared for life. So tonight, we have, we're here learning about local government and working on our citizenship in the Community Merit Act. And so if any of the scouts would like to speak, they're certainly welcome to talk. We have a lot of ideas.
What do you think are the biggest challenges facing Henry County right now, and how's the board working to address them? Thank you for the opportunity and letting us come out tonight to the board meeting. And I would like to talk about those.
You guys had talked about your STEM opportunities and what you were wanting to support here in the community.
Yes.
Several different organizations that you participate in.
And there were, we participate in several different organizations for the Henry County and the STEM activities, and. And I participate in the FTC robotics team in Henry County and NCI.
Thank you all for being here. We understand that.
Did you answer his question?
We understand that there's always a natural nervousness when you're speaking in front of a group, maybe not quite expecting a group this size, but thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for making Henry County a better place with scouting.
You know, I just want to say, I was a Boy Scout also. I went to the Cub Scouts and then to the Boy Scouts, and I had probably an honor that most of y'all probably don't have, is that I had a chance to go to Germany with my father in service, and we got to meet the German Boy Scouts, the Italian Boy Scouts, Swedish Boy Scouts, Denmark Boy Scouts. We had what's called a Klondike Derby, which was a big sled. We built a long sled. We come in 13th out of all those countries that, and all the teams participated in it, by carrying a flat, I carried a sled across, across the finish line, but I could tell you one thing, Boy Scouts did a lot for me when I was growing up. I know that the scouts are, I don't know how now is flourishing in the United States far as membership goes in the Boy Scouts, but don't, don't ever give up on the Boy Scouts. I'm serious. Stay, stay in the Boy Scouts all the way up until, you know, you're timed out per se. And even then, you become a scout leader and so forth. Don't ever give up on the Boy Scouts. That's one of the best organizations that the country has ever come up with, with the Boy Scouts. It teaches you teams, team participation, leadership skills that you would probably never get any other place than being in the Boy Scouts. And then it gives you commodity with all your friendships that you got and other scouts that you may meet throughout your life. It's a lifetime experience, so, and I congratulate each and every one, even from the Cub Scouts up through the Scouts to the Eagle Scout. You know, that was an honor I never got to. I got up pretty good in the Boy Scouts. I really did. I was, I was really pretty good, but my dad was in the service, and we moved all over the place, and, you know, it was mixed up season for me, but honestly, I appreciate every one of you for the job that you're doing, especially the Scout Masters.
And I'm not going to directly answer your question, but I'm going to answer it based on, you know, you guys asking that question. One of the things I'd like to say is that, you know, I'd like to challenge the youth of Henry County to present yourself in a manner that you can lead other folk in the right direction, and I think you all are doing that, and we need so many more youth who will stand for right, so many youth who will make the right decisions regardless of what's going on around you. And I challenge you all and I encourage you all to, you know, challenge your friends to, you know, go to school, make good decisions in school, make good decisions outside of school so that we can have the future leaders that we need in Henry County. And I think that is one issue that we have a lot of youth are making bad choices, and if you guys are, all are in school, you probably hear some of these things, you see these things, and just want to challenge you all to, you know, to take your codes that you accept as, you know, scouts, and encourage your friends to make good choices, good decisions, and be that role model, and don't fall to the temptations, don't fall to the peer pressure, but continue to stand on what you know is right. And that would be my challenge to you all as future leaders of Henry County.
Thank you all again for being here tonight. We will start with agenda item number 12, a consideration of a resolution recognizing Election Worker Appreciation Day in Henry County. Mr. Wagner?
Pleased to have a number of our election workers here tonight for this recognition. As you know, in Henry County and across our nation, election workers play a vital role in ensuring our elections are conducted in a secure, accurate, and transparent manner. Virginia Joint House Resolution 500 designates the Tuesday after each November general election as the Election Worker Appreciation Day, and staff has prepared a resolution to acknowledge consideration honoring and recognizing our local election workers.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you can offer that recognition in the form of a resolution that you have before you for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to read this resolution, Recognizing Our Election Workers and Appreciation Day. Whereas elections are a cornerstone of representative government, and their successful administration depends on the commitment and service of trained, responsible election workers. And whereas, election workers in Henry County play a vital role in ensuring that elections are conducted in a secure, accurate, and transparent manner. And whereas, these individuals generously give their time, often starting before dawn and working late into the evening, setting up polling places, assisting voters, and helping maintain the integrity of the electoral process. And whereas, their professionalism, patience, and attention to detail create a fair and accessible experience for all voters in Henry County. And whereas, the Virginia General Assembly has recognized the contributions of these public servants by designating the Tuesday after each November election as Election Worker Appreciation Day through House Joint Resolution 500. And whereas, the Henry County Registrar's Office, Electoral Board, and Board of Supervisors are grateful for the dedication shown by these workers during each election cycle. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize November 11th, 2025, as Election Worker Appreciation Day in Henry County, and extend its sincere appreciation to all election workers for their important role in supporting local democracy. Be it further resolved that the board encourages all residents of Henry County to join in recognizing and thanking these individuals for their service and to acknowledge the important part they play in making our elections fair, efficient, and accessible to all. And this is signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board adopt this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is five with one absent. Mr. Pruitt was unable to join us for the evening session, but he joined us through the afternoon session. At this time, I'm going to ask board members if you will join me, and I'll also ask our
I speak on behalf of all of these wonderful folks that without elections, without them
registrar to join me and appropriate members of her group that we can gather down front
working, we could not make elections happen.
and present this to you.
I would like for my workers to say, and my board, if you will, because you guys are the ones that deserve every bit of the thanks, and you all please say your prayers.
All right.
Like I said, without good citizens and Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, and I want you guys to hear this, because we always need good people, good citizens to help serve the rest of the community, we could not make elections happen. So I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, because 1100 does a thankless job. It is a poorly paid job, and you all do more than we need, so we just appreciate you all so much. So thank you, and thank you all for this. We have some refreshments, slight refreshments for after the meeting is completed out in our lobby, so if you all would like to join us, our election workers, please do.
Thank you all so much for what you do, and as is stated in the resolution, starting many times, very, very early in the morning and working late into the evening. Thank you so much. Agenda item number 13 will take up general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Just a couple items. At our October meeting, the Commonwealth Transportation Board recommended providing additional funding to two projects on 220, one for intersection improvements at 220 and 87, and another to improvements of a segment from the bypass down to Marlborough and Starville. And as required in the code, we will hold a public hearing Thursday night at Drew Mason from 5:00 to 7:00. And the purpose of that is to get public input and ultimately hopefully get that added to the six-year plan. So if you have any questions, just let me know, but that's Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at Drew Mason, for the public input on those two projects. Just a couple things. We're mowing, we're still mowing, we've got some we mowed early, and we're going back over about, I don't know, eighty percent complete with our mowing for the year. And I know I spoke with you, VDOT's.
times very, very early in the morning and working late into the evening. Thank you so much. Agenda Item Number 13 will take up general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Just a couple items. At their October meeting, the Commonwealth Transportation Board recommended providing additional funding to two projects on 220, one for intersection improvements at 220 and 87, and another to improvements of a segment from the bypass down to Marlborough and Starville. And as required in the code, we will hold a public hearing Thursday night at Drew Mason from 5:00 to 7:00. And the purpose of that is to get public input and ultimately hopefully get that added to the six-year plan. So if you have any questions, just let me know, but that's Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at Drew Mason. Get public input on those two projects. Just a couple things, we're mowing, we're still mowing, we've got some we mowed early, and we're going back over about, I don't know, 80% complete with our mowing for the year. And I know I spoke with you, VDOT's aware of the fatality at 58 at the Dollar General. It was very tragic. And as with any fatality, we review the circumstances surrounding that and make suggestions. A lot of times, they're not quick and, you know, quick to be able to do, but we are looking at the intersection as well.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Do any of the Board Members have anything for Ms. Hughes at this time?
Yeah, Ms. Hughes, I have received texts in the last three or four days, reminder, if no one has called your office about the road conditions of Kimberly Road and Brambleton Road.
Have not received anything, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item Number 14, the public hearing rezoning application, R-25-14 for Robert Amos. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at 16783 and 16805 AL Philbin Highway. It's in the Horse Pasture District. Property shown on Tax Map 50.8 as Lot 176. The applicant requests the rezoning of approximately one acre from Commercial District B1 and Agricultural A1 to Suburban Residential District. Athlete wishes to subdivide this property and create two single-family residences out of it. Following public hearing, both Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
Okay, I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:20 p.m. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:20. Ms. McKinnon, I believe this is in your district.
It is. Is Mr. Amos here?
Yeah, I am.
Oh, all the way in the back, okay. All right. Mr. Amos has done a good job remodeling that building. It looks good. And I would make a motion to approve the rezoning as it's been presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. It's my understanding that 15 has been withdrawn, so that takes us to Agenda Item 16, public hearing rezoning application, R-25-16, Percy H. Gibson, Jr. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at 60 Broken Oak Drive in the Iriswood District. The property shown on Tax Map 45711 as lots 6, 6A, and 7. The applicant here is requesting rezoning of three lots from Suburban Residential District to Rural Residential District, and the applicant wishes to replace a manufactured home on this property that was destroyed by fire in the year 2020. Following the public hearing, both Planning Commission and staff also recommend approval of this request.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:22. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:22. Mr. Dillard, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir, it is. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda Item 17, Matters Presented by the Public. Is there anyone desiring to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? Anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing and hearing no indication, that takes us to Agenda Item 18. I'll ask for a motion. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Agenda Item 18 is for adjournment. All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening, and again, thank you for coming out tonight.